Welcome to the special meeting of the Larkspur City Council today, Wednesday, October 26th. It's 3:00 PM. I'm Dan Hilmer, serving as mayor for the city council this year. The first item on the agenda today is roll call. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Candell?
I am here.
Councilmember Hara?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Mayor Hilmer?
Here. Would you please rise and join us in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The first item, our next item is public comment. Are there members of the public here that would like to ask questions or make comments regarding items that are not listed on today's agenda?
I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members in Zoom or in the council chamber?
There is no public comment.
All right, I do have a public comment myself. I would like to express my gratitude to the city council who acted unanimously to put Larkspur Measure G on the ballot. The measure reads very clearly, and I'm very thankful for all the work that went into it to protect property in Larkspur. That's my public comment. The next item on the agenda is approval of the consent calendar. There are two items. Are there members of the council who have questions regarding these items? Are there members of the public? Who have comments or questions on these items?
I'm looking for any raised hands. Our first comment will come from caller ending in 7713.
Welcome. Welcome.
Good afternoon. This is Nimi Willard calling in, president of the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers. Larkspur resident and cost director Laura Epple informs me that the city sent around this afternoon a notice to residents informing them that the Measure G tax rate, that the tax rate, full sales tax rate for Larkspur residents should Measure G pass would be 9.25% as opposed to the 9.0% that was in the voter information guide. We, I just wanted to call in and tell you that we very much appreciate the clarification that was sent around to voters today. Thank you.
Regarding the consent calendar, if there are no questions or comments, may I please have a motion from the council?
A motion to approve?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Mayor Hilmer?
Yes. The consent calendar passes.
Step towards the library.
We have one public hearing today, which is to introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance 1061 to implement California Government Code Section 65852.21. This is SB 9. And we have a staff report, please.
Thank you. Staff is asking you to introduce an ordinance to implement SB 9, which was signed into law last September and took effect on January 1st. The law allows subdivision of single-family sites and construction of up to two units on each site. The city council adopted an urgency ordinance to implement SB 9 earlier this year. That's in the zoning regulations. The urgency ordinance will expire in December, and so we're recommending that you adopt the existing regulations as a regular non-urgency ordinance. Staff is not proposing any modifications to the ordinance adopted by the city council that's in effect today. The city hasn't received any SB 9 applications. We have heard that Corder Madera has received a number of them. But there's, we don't have any reason to recommend any changes at this time. It might be something that you could take up in the future if you wanted to revisit the regulations after perhaps the housing element is adopted. We recommend introduction of the ordinance by title only, and this concludes my staff report unless you have any questions for me.
Are there any questions of staff regarding this ordinance? Are there any members of the public who have questions regarding this ordinance?
From our audience members? There's no public comment.
I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the city council for further consideration. Catherine, would you like to start a discussion? Or if there's consensus, I'm ready to take a motion?
I, I'm, thanks for putting this together, Elise. I, I know that several residents in Corder Madera that are getting ADUs and other things on their lot, so we might be seeing more. But I appreciate that you were able to put this together and we will be a forward.
And I welcome Vice Mayor Paulson to the meeting.
Oh, good.
Yeah, apologize, I just flew in last night, forgot.
You're supposed to be tired.
Dave, do you have any questions regarding the SB 9 implementation step we're taking today?
Not so far.
Are there other, are there members of the public that have questions or comments?
There's no additional public comment.
All right. Mr. City Manager?
I just wanted to note for the record that we hadn't really planned on this meeting being about anything other than the library project this, but we realized we need to meet a deadline. So this will be in your next, for the second reading on your regular agenda, should there have been members of the public that want to engage you then?
All right, this is an introduction and the waiving of a first reading of ordinance 1061. Is there a motion?
I will make that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second, thanks.
Please call the roll.
Yes.
Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson?
Yes.
Mayor Hilmer?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. We have one business item. Opt 5.1, options for location of offices for city administration and the community development department. Can we please have a staff report?
Before Mr. Skinner takes over, I did want to note that for the benefit of folks who may not have been able to see the agenda itself, the reason you heard some cheerleading at the dais is because with the consent calendar this, today, the council has formally acknowledged that the new library is a funded project in the capital improvement program. And that's germane to the conversation we're going to have now, which is to discuss the full scope of what we want to accomplish there versus what we may or may not want to accomplish here at this building and the various options that we need to explore. So, but it is an exciting milestone moment to, to take an unfunded project and move it into the funded category. I will now turn over to Mr. Skinner.
Good afternoon. Julian Skinner, Public Works Director. So we're here for our second special city council meeting regarding the library and, and city hall. And as the city manager mentioned at the first meeting, we focused on the library and that did lead to the two items that were on your consent calendar. Today approving the capital improvement program project for a new library with over $10 million in funding from a state grant and from the Commons Foundation donations. And then also engaging Kitchell to do the project management and construction management to move this project forward, get the requests for proposals and for qualifications out there to get that project rolling. So the presentation portion of tonight's meeting is going to focus on city hall and the building that we're sitting in today at 400 Magnolia. And so we'll recap a little bit, some of the information that was prepared over a year ago when we first looked, or not first looked, but when we most recently looked at the condition of 400 Magnolia Avenue. Talk about some of the issues with this building. And then given that we're moving forward with moving the library out of this building, we'll chat about options for the city offices that are housed within 400 Magnolia and what should become of this building in the event that city offices are moved elsewhere. So we did commission a conditions report on this building. We had a consultant look through, go through all of the systems in the building and make a valuation. And they came up with findings that, that a lot of what's in this building, not, not much of a surprise for those who spend a lot of time in here, is at or near the end of its service life. And so what that means is a lot of things are still working, the lights are still on, the window's still open and closed. But in any building, these items have a life expectancy of when they're going to start getting glitches and having repair issues and ultimately need to be replaced. And most of the components in this building are towards the end of what that normal service life would be. And that includes some items that have some hefty price tags with them. The HVAC, that's the heating, ventilation and air conditioning. That is a constant service expenditure for the city every year. There's one component or another, or multiple of the heating and air conditioning system that needs to be replaced. I think we've all sat through a couple of sweltering meetings here in the summer when it hasn't been behaving as it should. There's a lot of outdated electrical systems in the building, wiring and things like that. I think we all know about the elevator and the probability that the elevator will one day stop working. It's a very old elevator. It's not the kind of thing where we can just call somebody up and have it, it fixed. It will need a lot of work if it needs to get put back into service if some of the critical components on it go out. They don't make a lot of those pieces anymore. And then there's other deficiencies, things that are simply not in the building because they weren't required at the time that the building was built. That's, it does not have the seismic restraint that a modern building would be, so it's not built to current earthquake codes. And that doesn't mean it will definitely fall down in an earthquake. It means that without pulling all the walls apart and seeing exactly how everything is connected, we don't know to what size of an earthquake this building would withstand at the moment. It doesn't have fire sprinklers and there are accessibility challenges in this building as far as people with wheelchairs and mobility needs and their ease of moving throughout the building and getting to the services that they need. And so the consultants looked at all of these and came up with a cost estimate for what it would cost to fix in place each one of these items. And, and I'll show you that cost in, in a minute. But one of the important things to consider as we look at the age of this building and things that will most likely need to get fixed in the near term is that we're going to be looking at a lot of piecemeal repairs. For example, if the HVAC system just goes down and it's not repairable and it needs to be replaced, that's a very costly item. And if we do that by itself, it's not necessarily going to be done in a manner that is going to work with, let's say, if we have to fix the electrical system or if we have to do a seismic upgrade. If we tackle these issues as they come up and fix them in place, they could very well be throwaways if we decide to do a bigger improvement project in this building. Because there are a lot of things that would get put back in exactly the same place they are, but that's not necessarily the best place for them. One example is the elevator. If we had to redo the elevator, it would be bigger. It would cause a lot of other structural components in the building to move, which may affect HVAC and other things like that. So unfortunately, there are some big ticket items that could require fixing in the building and they may end up being throwaways. If down the road, we decide to do another renovation of, of this project, because it's not necessarily that anything we fix today would work with however the new building was configured through a more thorough renovation. So the cost, there's a big variation on what it would cost to renovate this, this building. If we look at the next, this is just a listing of what should be fixed in the building. And then the price tag, if you were to fix it in place without consideration of reorganizing the building or repurposing it, it's about a $12 million price tag. We've also looked at what it would cost if we reimagine this building from the ground up and kept whatever historical features we needed to in the building, but move the walls around, move the spaces around to have some other function. And depending on what that function is, you get up to about 18 million. So that's the range for fixing everything in this building and make it work for something moving forward. Is that 12 to 18 million dollar range? Yes.
Julian, I'm sorry, just a quick question, and I don't know, Sky, if this is a question for you or Julian? That if instead of using this as a government building, we leased it out to a private company and either that private company is for public or for private purposes, are the requirements, the legal requirements the same or lower for a private entity as it would be for a government entity? And what would that price tag look like if we rented out to somebody else and they had to upgrade this building? What would it look like at that point?
Yeah, I mean, there are different ADA requirements for whether it's a public building that we're doing public services out of versus if it's a private establishment. There are still, there are ADA rules that apply to all of them, but there's different rules that apply whether it's public or private. And depending on what the use was, they may lead to the same type of improvements or depending on what the purpose of the building was and how much public access it had to it. There may be some requirements that would be triggered in a public building that wouldn't necessarily in a private. But in general, if it's going to be an area that's going to be open to the public, it's going to have those same ADA requirements from the, from the building code.
So in, in general, whether it's our building, you know, whether we use it for government purposes or we lease it to somebody else, this is the general price tag we're talking about for any, any use?
In general, I think the, you know, the, the cost variation is going to be in how the spaces is divided up and the more dense it is, if you were going to build more offices and doors and furnishings and finishings, then the prices kind of go up. Where if it was more of a, you know, like a lofty type space that was kind of an open floor plan, then some of your finish costs may be down a little bit. But you're, you know, the, the bones of your structure, the, the seismic, the access from the outside of the building to the inside, those things are going to be pretty consistent depending on, regardless of the use.
Thank you.
This is a matrix that we've shown a few times through some past meetings, and I've highlighted in, in red what the focus of today's meeting is. And so we've got the, the column categories here. We're talking about city offices, the library and council chambers. And so as I mentioned, the last meeting, we focused on the library and moving forward with planning for a new library at the community facilities, parcel of the commons. And then so today we're again focusing on what the ultimate location for city offices should be. And so the options you see here in the red box are ideas that we've presented at meetings before. Keeping city offices in the building there and now in 400 Magnolia. Building a new structure at the commons at the same time we build the library. Or looking at building another building somewhere else or rehabilitating another building somewhere that's not at the commons for a new city hall. And then also not building, but moving into leased space, like renting office space or some other space somewhere else in the city. Those are the four options we've kind of, I've studied before. And so as I get through this presentation, we'll come back to those questions because that's the feedback we're looking for today as far as if any of those are horrible ideas or good ideas or come back to us with more information that sounds like a direction to, to consider. And then I also do want to make sure we don't forget about the council chambers in these conversations. So when we've shown in the past, a new library and potentially a new city hall there, I'll get into some of the sizes, but there's the potential to build a new city hall with enough flexible space that you could have council chambers there. There could be consideration to keeping council chambers in this building as they're.
Point of clarification, I think your previous reference to quote city hall, you meant to say library?
I don't think so.
New library with flexible community room?
Yeah, well, we've got to be, so it's, yeah, there are ways of programming the library as it is now. This is a joint space that's used jointly by the city council and the library. But I was specifically referring to if we build new city hall at the Commons Foundation, we could also build that space flexible for the council chambers also, without ruling out your other discussion of the library, yes?
I have a suggestion, just a communications idea. Instead of using the words new city hall, I would prefer to use the words new administrative city offices.
I agree, because I, I was a little, when you said city hall, I immediately heard a bigger structure and more needs.
It infers a dominant use on the site.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. Today, earlier in the consent calendar, you made the library a project. As we've told you before, we need to know about this situation so we're clear what we're going to put out to the development community, if it's any additional project involving administrative offices. So this entire discussion today was intended to be about that, those questions and not the first building, which is defined heavily by the grant.
Right.
So I, I have questions about the interplay of the two, the finances of the two. Is that in this presentation? Should I wait and hear the presentation and you're going to answer my questions through the presentation?
I would suggest you hold till the end and then we'll have a robust discussion about, to the extent we can answer some of those questions, we will.
Thank you.
Okay, so just to finish off on the city council chambers option, we have a four, staying at 400 Magnolia, working into the new building at the commons. And then also the option of, I threw back in here, I think we talked about before, but it didn't make it into the, into the slide was sharing space with another public agency. I don't have lease on here. It's certainly an option, but I'm not sure about the finances of paying for this size of a leased space for something that gets, you know, used only once every two weeks. But it could be an option if the right leased space is available that again, if we're talking about flexible space with city administrative offices and council chambers, there, there may be that option. I don't see it as a front runner, but it could be something that works out if we explore the leased space option. And so when we talk about a potential for a second building along with the library, as we showed you last time, we're envisioning something of the magnitude of 5,000 square feet. And so this is the same chart here that shows the square footages in, in this building. And so we use this chart to demonstrate 6,800 square foot library based on the footprint of this building. But that does include some shared space between library staff and city administrative offices staff. So what we would propose here, if we were going to consider a second building at the commons would be a building roughly about 5,000 square feet. And so if you look at what's in this building now, the city admin offices encompass about 2,500 square feet of this building. That doesn't include hallways, bathrooms, elevator, kitchen, some areas that are shared with the, with the library. And it doesn't also include the council chambers. So, and that also allows for just the staff that we have in here today without any growth opportunity. So we've shown what a 5,000 square foot building would take up footprint wise on the site. And we're proposing that that would house the 2,500 square feet that city offices currently. And then the other flexible space would be some of that support space if there were to be a kitchen bathrooms and potentially some flex space, some bigger meeting rooms that would get you up to 5,000 square feet. But again, the higher the square foot, the higher the dollars. So that's not something that's tied in. That's what we're suggesting if we were to move forward, that would be a starting number. And certainly we would go through a, a process that would refine that number at some point.
Question for you, just in terms of word usage. Is the coun, the council chambers is intended to be kind of a, not kind of, but a flex space? Is that right?
So as it is in the library program, we acknowledge that the, the council, the council chambers, that space, that square footage had flexible use and was used for meetings and for library purposes. So I would imagine that's some, to some degree, how it would be used in the library.
Can I make a suggestion right now? That when we, instead of the words council chambers, we use the words commons hall and that we identify that as a place where council meetings may be held?
About, about if you decide we're moving there, then we'll, wordsmith. I, I appreciate what you're saying, but it's a little challenging for staff. I don't.
I just think as long as these meetings are viewed by the public, we try to be as constructive as possible with what's going on.
Through the mayor, I would object to that. I think we need to talk about having a city council venue for us going forward.
Oh, I'm not denying that at all.
And call it that.
Whatever you call it, I mean, I think we, we envision there'd be some room that a vast majority of the time would be available to the community services department, but would be designed in a way that it'd be easy to hold the county, the city council meetings in it.
That's similar to what we have now?
Yeah, I mean, this room is not ideal actually for community services because it's not that flexible. I think we'd do something, for those of you who've been on the council when we've held it, a meeting over at the community room at CNPA, right? You could set up a pretty nice looking quote unquote council chamber there. And then that room's very flexible and can be a classroom, it can be a activity room. It's been the temporary emergency operations center. So it's, I think we're envisioning that, but larger.
And we've had the history of doing that. We relocated over there in 2015 or I think while this building was being moderate, modestly renovated. And it's, I mean, we can design a space that is fully functioning with appropriate technologies so that it can be more flexible like that.
Mr. Mayor, I think we should defer some aspects of this conversation until after the presentation is concluded, because I think we don't all have the same views on that, some of these issues.
Understood. Continue, please.
Okay, the next slide talks to the timeline of the direction that we're seeking tonight, and this is driven by the library project. Because if we are to build a second building at the commons, it makes the most sense to build it at the same time we're building it, the library and have it as, as one joint project, although we will keep the funding separate. And so this is the timeline we presented for the library project, which is a snapshot from two weeks ago. And I can tell you everything's moved out two weeks because we still don't have the rules on how we're going to spend the, or how we are allowed to spend the grant money. It's not hurting us too much at the front end because we're still doing a lot of general stuff with the RFQ. But as we get closer to issuing the RFQ, if we don't have those rules soon enough, some of these dates will push out. But we said we're trying to get the RFQ out, which is the first step in trying to find a design build contractor by the end of this calendar year. So ideally, we would know when we issue that RFQ, if it's one building or two buildings.
And I'm sorry, Julian, when you say the rules, you're talking about published by the state?
By the state that are for the $5 million grant.
Thank you.
We have general rules from when they did the call for projects, but they will issue something that's 20 pages long and have assigned it. And it tells us how we can and can't spend the money specifically.
And, and Julian, does it, you keep saying separate building. Do, I mean, I'm thinking like Corder, like San Anselmo, their library is connected in a, to a breezeway to their administrative offices, so they're contiguous.
Yeah, so as far as how we spend the money, they will be separate. They have to be separate as far as what the buildings look like to the outside observer. They may, it may be that we can build them in such a way that it looks like one building or it ends up looking like a campus. But we have to be careful and build them as two separate buildings and keep fun, keep track of the separate funding sources separately. So you're not going to see one big building with different pieces, library and different pieces, city admin offices. You're going to see two areas that we can draw a line around and say, library, city admin offices. So ideally, when we issue that RFQ, we'll know whether it's one building or two buildings or one, two buildings that look like one bigger building. But there, there is also another decision point where we issue the RFP, and that's after we get the responses back from the request for qualifications, then we narrow it down. And then the firms are coming back to us with what can they do for us for the construction dollars that we give them? And that's going to be in March, April of next year. Before then, we definitely need to have a footprint of what we want built or it's going to push the schedule out. Uh, before then, we definitely need to have a footprint of what we want built, or it's going to push the schedule out. Somewhere between December and February is where we get into the point where if we don't have a decision. That things are, the, that end date is going to get moved out. So ideally, um, by the end of December, we know what it looks like. Um, and then we can maybe still make it work if we get into February, but once we hit March and we still don't have direction on one building or two. Then every date gets moved out by however long it takes from then uh to get that decision. If that makes sense. Um, so the direction we're looking for tonight as it uh relates to the city admin offices and four hundred Magnolia. Um, is we have these four options and what we're looking for tonight is. Whether any of these options you think they're, are non-starters, we shouldn't consider anymore, take them off the table. Um, and then the other ones uh that you would like us to come back to you with more information on. And then also if any of these are front runners that you would like us to focus on and keep the other ones um at a sidebar, but not dismiss. At this time, so uh what we're looking at here for city offices at least is. Um, option one is a city office should stay at four hundred Magnolia. Um, and then in doing that, uh, we also need to start looking at a project to upgrade this building to house city offices. Um, number two is we construct that second building at the Commons and that's where the city admin offices. Uh, would go to uh when the library moves o- over there also. Um, option three is we build a new building, but it's not at the Commons. We look for something else, either an existing building that we can own and renovate and turn into a city admin offices. Um, or we build something uh from scratch that's not at the uh, the Commons. And then number four is look at renting an existing building, going in, making the tenant improvements and turning that into the city. Um, admin offices. So those are the four options that um. We're looking for direction on good idea, bad idea, come back with more um information. And so. Um, these um. These, this is the, the thing that we need answered by ideally December, if not latest at February to know. Whether that library project is a library and city administrative offices um or not. Um, and then there's um follow-up questions for. If you want to move forward with any of the options other than number one, which was city offices stay in this building. Uh, then the secondary conversation is, um, what do we do with four hundred Magnolia? Do we issue an RFQ? Um, for folks to look at this building and tell us what they would like um to turn it into or how they would like to develop it. Or renovate it. Um, or do we see if there's other local government agencies that would have interest in, in using the space? Um, and then the next slides talk about the funding for the second building. So I'll go back to the first question and I will. Uh, pause it um there and turn it back for uh comments and questions.
I just have one question to start. Are these options equally financially feasible? And if not, how would they order?
Well, we haven't gone through the full analysis as you look at um items three and four that say cost unknown. We haven't really explored these. We have a general sense for. Uh, you know what, building something a new um cost, but we haven't really done an evaluation of what land or properties or buildings are available to take. And, and renovate. Um, and then we haven't really drilled down. I mean, you see. Um, rents and lease rates listed for buildings, but without getting in there and knowing what dollar there would be to tenant improvements. And knowing what lease terms are, uh, we would have to uh do some more work to come back and be able to put these in some sort of. Order of magnitude as far as uh cost goes. The only one that um we really know is. Um, one and two, we've had some work done on the costs of renovating this building. And then also. If we were to construct a second building um at the Commons, if, if there um is a desire to look further into three and four. Then we need to go and do some of that costing information and bring that back.
Number two is the only one that is. Uh, grant. Uh, relevant.
And if you were to provide um direction to move forward with uh number two, then yes, we, that's. Building the, the structure at the same time as the library and the timing needs to.
That's the only one that you can use the grant for.
No, but I don't want it. No.
Okay.
None, none of this is about the grant. The grant is the library.
I'm trying to distinguish them.
The, the, the grant is not part of this item. This item is about. About either city. Rehabilitating this building to continue to serve in its current capacity minus the library. Or relocating the city offices and the meeting space for the.
But without financial relate ordering of like costs. And not being able to discuss the resources available for the projects, i.e. the grant. Um, it looks to me like if we don't have the administrative offices at the community facilities parcel. Then, then the grant monies can, we have to find money, other money for that.
Yeah, I don't want you to say that because that's going to get us in trouble. The, the, the city administrative offices and the proposed flex space. That we're talking about today, in no way will ever see a dollar of the grant.
I see.
Can't do that.
Okay.
So.
I wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, so that's why Mr. Skinner is working really hard to say. It's two projects, potentially two buildings. It might end up looking like one building, but um it's really two projects. And.
Okay.
And so. The reason we feel some need to get direction from the council sooner rather than later is that. If the council is interested in the option of moving the city administrative offices. To the parcel, the most cost effective and efficient way to do that would be to make it part of. The solicitation from the development community and, and have it be all built at once. Even though it's two projects, it could all be constructed by one contractor. And it could all be done at once when the economies of scale are more available.
And that is option two.
And that is option two.
Thank you.
And, and I'm sorry to, to follow up on that. We know option one was twelve to eighteen million. Can you remind us what the cost of option two would be for a five thousand square foot building?
Uh, I believe the numbers we shared with you last time were between five and eight million.
Okay, thank you.
And then. We've started to do rough analysis just to better understand options three and four. Um, so I, I can't give you a detailed assessment. Rents are all over the map for commercial space in Larkspur. They run from three dollars a square foot to ten dollars a square foot. And I think that there are two key variables, location and quality of the buildings. Um, are in play with that swing in numbers that we're seeing when we, when we've been looking around. Um, I don't think it's particularly realistic that we would purchase a building and, and tear it down. Then we might as well be talking about rehabilitating this building, but um, but we did feel compelled to at least note that's an option. The um. Challenge we have with the rental market is probably the, the buildings that are more turnkey are out at Larkspur Landing. So. Um, if we move city administration out to Larkspur Landing, we create other operational challenges for ourselves. Because then when the public works staff needs to come visit city administrative staff, it's a, it's a. It's, it's a lot of moving, losing time during the workday, traveling back and forth. So. Um, it's doable. It's an option, uh, but that is something to consider as part of the discussion. Or some of these unknowns are also the externalities of spreading city operations too far apart. The other things you're dealing with, the landlord, so you have to be kind of conscious of the fact that you're doing that. But there are plenty of cities that rent. Their city administrative space, so it's not, it's not impossible. Sorry for the double negative.
Yes.
Um, we're currently in, our administrative staff are in three different locations. Pu- your Public Works is in a separate and we have this office and then we have Park and Rec or Rec in a different one. Are you imagining that we will have enough space to bring at least recreation into this area?
So the, the reason we wouldn't advocate.
No, to the, to, if we do number two.
The reason I wouldn't recommend that at this time is that um one of the primary functions of the recreation staff. Is to manage the shared assets that we hold with Larkspur Corderman era school district. And there's a lot of value for the, them being located on the hall middle school property. So um, that's across the street practically. You're just, you're actually shortening the travel time for both public works. And um, recreation.
Kevin, do you have questions? Uh, just to, to follow up on, on that response, I, it, it sounds like. What we do with those facilities and operations really doesn't relate to the decision that we're talking about today, which is what to do with this building.
Uh, the only thing I'd put as a caveat is that um. Both recreation and, and public works are leasing space from other public entities and both those public entities have. From time to time signaled that those leases have termination processes in them. And if the. Right combination of pressures occur, they're going to terminate those leases. So. Having, whether it's here or down at the Commons property. Uh, having some flexibility to bring some people into the buildings is, is valuable. So I, I think. Mr. Skinner has been very prudent to suggest wherever we go, the space be larger than just what planning. But that's what community development and the administration need for their purposes.
Oh. Would you rather focus on this building?
Either way, however you want to go, I, I'm just trying to, to, you know, encourage you that between now and December, we really need to resolve where we're going. But this question.
Um, would you please describe? Um, an, a scenario where another government entity would use this building. Uh. Such as Central Marin Fire.
Well, um, Central Fire is a unique situation um. Because they have the building next door and these buildings have a historical context with one another. Um, and so. One of the many ideas that we've spitballed at staff and we've talked with the fire chief about is. If Central Marin Fire was leveraging some or all of the space in this building, would that be of value to them? And um, his answer is yes, because he's looking at all, well, I am too, as a manager of the fire authority. We're looking at all four of the facilities that the fire authority currently uses. They're all in various. Conditions that are not ideal. And so we're trying to figure out. How do we maximize the, those assets for the next hundred years? So we're delivering. What the public needs in terms of fire protection. And the chief has said that. If we found a solution where the fire authority could take advantage of both these properties in a way that this could be its command center. It might relieve some of the challenges that they're looking at at some of the other properties. Um, these facilities are never going to be ideal for any heightened fire service than what you're getting now at the most. And that's probably not ideal if we, we bring in the fire folks and they talk about it. They're operating out of bays that are. Barely bigger than the trucks now. Um. So what exactly that model totally looks like is something to, that could be explored. Um, I haven't yet had any conversations with other government entities to see it or nonprofits to see if this is an ideal location for them as well. Um, I think whatever scenario the council were to look at with this building that doesn't involve. The city operations to some extent remaining here. Probably the ideal thing is to hold ownership in a ground lease and let the tenant then do the building. But there's smarter folks that need to kind of sort through that.
So just to capture that, the concept, and this was described informally at the last meeting. Central Marin Fire would share the floor, second floor of this building, which is this level. With the second floor of the adjacent fire station, almost at this level, connected by a bridge. And it would be uh unified to, to uh acceptable standards for administrative offices.
Well. That's one of the things we've spitballed and the mayor has the advantage, the other council members don't, that he once upon a time heard. Uh, two public work directors back talk about. A plan for a bridge between the two buildings. That plan, it's in a, it's in one of the files down at Public Works. Um, so it's feasible. It was studied. It's quite feasible to connect the two buildings on the second floor.
And that could combine with. Using the existing reading room in the library as a community room.
Well.
Aligned with programming.
The whole first floor would then have to be explored on what's the most appropriate use, but. Um, I think if you had Chief Martin up here and you're grilling him right now, he, his instinct is what he sees. At the central and police building and what he sees down at the Southern Marin Fire building, which is a, a nice community asset of a building. That's available to the fire staff, but also to the community.
And then we'd have to find somebody interested in the use of the fire bay, and firebays next door.
Uh, and that might be Central Marin Fire. I, I don't know. We, we haven't gotten far, much farther than the conversation we just. Have had, but.
Well, we've had, we've had a lot of citizens express interest in that, in using something. So anyway, I just wanted to say there are ideas that uh make sense for this building.
Scott, through the mayor, yeah, can, can I just throw out there, um, hypothetically, if we, we did something like that. Uh, do we have any idea what, I mean, would we lease the property to Central Marin Fire? Do we have any idea what we would lease it for? And would there still need to be retrofits and who pays for that? I mean, if we're still going to have to do the, the HVAC system. Who's going to pay for that?
So um, those are good questions that I wouldn't be able to answer quickly, but um. It, there's two general models that we have with our JPAs in place. So um, currently with the fire authority, the fire authority is a tenant of the four facilities. That it occupies. Two of those facilities are owned by the city of Larkspur, two are owned by the town of Cordermadera. But, and the fire authority is responsible for everything inside the building. And the, the tenant, the landlords are responsible for everything on the exterior or outside of the building. That's kind of a rough summary of what those leases are structured to do. They're not leases to generate revenue because we'd be billing ourselves. So um, we didn't structure them that way. They're more to clarify. Which entity will deal, deal with which problems. Um. The Central Marine Police Authority is the other model we use. And in that case, um. The two member agencies that constructed the building, which are Larkspur, Cordermadera, each own half of that building. Um, and, and own it. Um. They essentially own the ground and then there's a community facilities district that built the building that, that. Is a financing mechanism that the two communities share. Um, and so that was how that particular arrangement was done. Typically, you're going to have to make some decision about who owns the ground and who owns the building and who's responsible for the different.
I, I, I guess the question I have is more along the lines of, uh, we just heard it was going to be twelve to eighteen million dollars to. Make this building safe.
Yeah.
Right? And if we lease it out to someone, regardless of who it is. I assume it's going to have to be made safe and if we're going to drop twelve to eighteen million dollars to do that, to lease it out. Why not just keep it?
And that, um, I, I, that's a discussion to, to have as well.
I mean, am I, am I right that we're still going to have to drop that money to make it, I mean, to, to fix the building up? I mean, the.
Yeah.
So, so we would pay half of that and we're there would pay half of it. Is that how that would work?
It depends, but the cost would still be there.
So some of, I would say, I would say if, if an entity like a fire operation came in here. With what we just described in very conceptual terms, you're moving closer to the less expensive end of. Mr. Skinner's range.
Right, even if it's twelve million.
Right.
But, but still, so who pays? Is it, is it the joint powers that pays to fix it? Or is it Larkspur, the owner of the building that pays to fix that?
In November, the fire authority is, council is going to get its first report of the conditions of the four facilities. That they're operating out of now. And for the fire authority, the appropriate thing is to talk about this question. In the context of all the needs, right? They have to be. They have to be prioritized, and we have to figure out how we would pay for everything. So that's why it's hard for me to totally answer your question about how we would structure the financing if we were doing it in concert with the Fire Authority. It's, it really is a big conversation because um, when this report's finished and out, you're going to see that as as I'm alluding to, all four facilities have needs. And the magnitude of those needs varies quite a bit. Um, but they all have needs and they're not, they're not easy fixes. None of them, none of them are going to be a perfect fire facility if we put a Band-Aid on them. So I think the value in the idea of potentially moving the Fire Authority here, though, is that from my perspective, i- if I'm thinking about it maybe as a taxpayer, the investment in my fire protection and fire prevention is one I might be more supportive of significant government expenditure than I may be about my office space. So that that's what I've wrestled with, is returning value to the taxpayer as part of this discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I ju- just to follow up on that point. I think we have a real opportunity, frankly, in our capacity to create solutions that will allow us to keep this property as City Hall, but also to provide um, joint services over time. And I would be very reluctant to see us toss that opportunity away. And that'll be my view as we get into the final parts of this conversation. But this has been very helpful and and I understand this is a dynamic process of trying to figure these things out. But I would hope that the council would agree with me that there is intrinsic value in keeping this property available to the city for whatever purposes that we decide it's are appropriate. And working out relationships with other entities where we can share costs over time. But to throw away this property in City Hall would be, in my mind, a mistake.
Scott.
Did you want to say something?
You want to?
Okay, so so first of all, is this time for discussion?
This is, this is just kind of a.
Okay, so so the the question that that I have um, is do we want to be kind of acquiring real estate at this point uh, at the expense of, I don't want to say draining, but using our funds or reserves? Uh, so converting, you know, five million dollars that we have in cash to a five million dollar property? Or do we want to kind of break even in the sense that if we buy a property, we sell a property? If we lease a property, then we are the lessor of a property and kind of break even and just trade one property for another as opposed to acquiring additional properties? A- and I don't know how I feel about that, and I don't know with, you know, we we have something of how we would potentially fund building another building. We could fund it by selling this building, that would be a potential way. Or, you know, somehow uh, getting money through the sale of one of our assets to purchase another asset. Another way is just to use our reserves to to build this new asset. And I I'm not sure with the reserves that we have and, you know, needing to stay liquid as a uh, as an uh, as a city that we want to drop, that we have, or, you know, want to drop five million dollars for a new property that may not be, you know, sellable if we need the money.
I think posing that question answers it.
I I have a simple test.
I I don't, I I don't know how, um, I I'm didn't mean that to lead to one answer or another, I'm I'm just something to.
I I led with the question about feasibility. I I propose that we create a feasibility test. And and but it involves um, I real acknowledging and being able to measure value in addition to cost. And I think location and uh, proximity to other things uh, enhances value. And by by taking advantage of those qualities and and investing in that, you amplify the value. I think there's a way to measure that. And I think the overall value minus the cost should be our feasibility test and their other residual value.
So my turn?
Yes.
Um, I I like that because I think what our goal, what our goal should be is how do we best serve the public? Because that's what we exist for as a local governance, is to best serve our residents and our business community. And I think this building has done that for a hundred years, but it no longer serves that purpose. I don't think it's accessible for many members of our community. I don't think it's probably um, the place that is the most hospitable to work with, work in, since it doesn't engage all of the modern needs that um, a community building should have. I think it's been a wonderful use for a hundred years, but now we have an opportunity to create uh, office space that our community can more easily access, that's in the core of our downtown and close to a brand new state of the art building. And I think we owe that to our community, to not put Band-Aids on a hundred year old building and use it for it's another purpose, but for civic engagement, I think it's exhausted its use.
So so just just to, if I can, through the mayor?
Please.
Ju- just to, a a question on that is, I I I'm not disagreeing with you, and you're kind of leading towards, you know, building a second building on the Commons. My question is, that's going to cost us five to eight million dollars. We could either use five to eight million dollars that's kind of in our reserves, you know, in different places, which may lead us, let make us less liquid than we may like to be. If there's a problem, you know, we may not have the reserves to deal with that problem. You know, or there may be, I think, or we could sell the building, you know, and and raise money by doing that in order to pay for the this new uh, the new project. I just, how do you feel about that?
I don't want to sell the building. I think we have, there's valuable use for this building, but not necessarily in the public use and access that we would like to see in a small governance, in my opinion. I I think what, to the mayor's point, there is possibility of another um, entity using it, maybe even an uh, private entity using it. It's a historic structure, but its interior isn't functioning anymore for what we need. And I've lived in a hundred and twelve year old building, and the minute you open a wall, and Julian can probably say this, it's one cascade of problems after another. And I think we owe it to our public to have a functioning elevator, to have a safe place for families and communities to gather and to access their public resources. And.
Well, all right, so so let me, let me ask now to staff. Hypothetically, you know, we we follow where we seem to be going, which is we hold on to this property, lease it out, which means we're not going to get you know, any bulk money coming in like you would in a sale. Uh, and we decided we want to build a second building. Do we feel comfortable, I mean, I I saw the where we get the money from for this thing? Do we feel comfortable that that's not going to drain our liquid assets so that if something comes up that we have to deal with, we're going to uh, be in a difficult situation?
May I offer some clarifying information? You you you're speaking of selling this building as if it's a typical real estate sale. Process of disposing of a of a historic public building involves offering it to the development community, which will quite probably result in a contingent offer. That contingent offer would be um, based on creating the value of a new project by clearing through all of the environmental, uh, including historical resource, including removing it off the historic inventory, which may involve lawsuits. That could take years. Therefore, the value under that scenario would probably be, probably less than you might hope.
That that that's fine, so so.
So I'm saying not counting on that as a apples to apples.
All right, so I I, all right, so I I will take that as a given, you know, that an option is not to sell this building in order to fund the new building. So the question then is, with the funding proposal and where these different pots of money are proposed in the this budget, does our staff feel that that is going to leave us vulnerable to a situation where, you know, we don't have the reserves that we necessarily feel comfortable with? Or that we can drop five to eight million dollars on this new building and it wouldn't be a problem?
Um, Julian, can you advance, put the slide back up or Allison? Take it to the finding the money. This is something that we shared with you from uh, at the last meeting. And what I've shown you here is that um, these are pots of money that we need. And I didn't frame it this way the last time. These are pots of money, we have to decide what to do with it. We can't sit on any of this money. There are certainly a whole host of other options to to put this money to work besides spending it to to help facilitate a a a second project on the Commons Property. Um, but to, I think to get to your question, none of this here significantly hits the liquidity of our general operations. And the reason that is, somebody might say, wait, the general fund reserves on the top line. The council has a policy to hold twenty-five percent to protect against significant uh, threats to our ability to operate. So we, that's not part of that one to two million. Your policy, your policy and practices then go on to say, anything in the reserve above that eventually should be strategically used for capital. So the question is if this is a good investment in capital. And but to your point, and it's an appropriate question, are we threatening that cushion? And and the answer is no.
Right, so so that's, that's exactly, so so hypothetically, Measure G doesn't pass, our storm brain drains explode. We're like, oh, man, we we've, we've got to fix these things. Well, good, we have twenty-five percent and and we're we're fine, we'll take care of the emergencies. We're not going to put this city in a financial jeopardy because we decided to build a pretty building, you know, to to put our offices in.
Yeah, and even if Measure G passes, that scenario that you're describing is a little different, right? That's an emergency, so we have a lot of different resources to protect us from that emergency. With Measure G not passing, where you get to challenges about these pots of money is um, you know, you you basically, if Measure G doesn't pass, don't have a sustainable source of money for the storm drains. So we're back to where we are now, which is whenever we find a pot of money, we consider whether to throw it into the storm drains, and we have to have the discussion if that's a good idea. That that's the value of Measure G, is it becomes a sustainable, steady investment in the system uh, and in disaster preparedness. But um, you know, I I think, I think all of these pots of money, you know, save maybe the T O T fund. You you're going to have to spend soon anyway. You just are, because the different ways they came into the city dictate that you need to start deciding what to do. Folks who recall, all of this, all of this, we've been holding mostly to, with the exception of the lease bonds, we've been holding for liquidity to manage the bridge project. And with the bridge project in its mitigation phase, the amount of liquidity that we need is much lower than it was when we were doing the actual bridge itself. That's why now these monies are free, but because of the way they came in the city, if they're not spent here, we'll be spending all of twenty twenty-three talking about how to spend this money down, because it's not appropriate to to be sitting on these pots of money anymore.
Okay, that 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 helps.
This is, this also isn't the entirety of what we would need to come up with. So we would probably have some sort of funding, we'd have to probably borrow or something to to do the final gap to whatever.
Got it, so this is about five million out of the five to eight, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it depends on what the project actually ends up being.
Okay, thank you for that, I appreciate that. And I I'm sorry for kind of dominating the conversation, just wanted to figure it out.
Please, uh, are there, are we taking questions?
And I do see that Vice Mayor Paulson.
Gabe, would you care to ask a question or make a comment? We invite you to do so.
Yeah, thanks, um, just a couple of things, you know, back to the four hundred magnolia. Um, I'm wondering um, a couple of practical things, timeline, if we do go out to the developer community, you know, how long we might expect, you know, any responses that are reasonable? Um, and then another, you know, thought is, you know, the value of it is its history, but is there a way to think of it, you know, as something where we could maintain the exterior without such a high budget? You know, Julian, you started talking about different synergies, like if you work with elevator, it may not be the same HVAC. I'm thinking more general, you know, people largely don't care about the interior, they care about the exterior. Is the way of budgeting around that or thinking about uses around that? Thank you.
Uh, let's take the second question first, that that one's probably a little bit easier because we have to preserve the exterior.
Yeah, I mean, the, from from what I understand, and we haven't gone into this in a, in 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 great uh, depth, but uh, we did chat with the the senior planner about the restrictions that would be on this building and the need to preserve the aesthetic and whether you're actually preserving the exterior or you do something and make it look the same when when you're, when you're finished. So that that would be part of it. But again, um, when you're talking about doing a seismic retrofit on an existing building, I think a lot of you probably seen um, glass office towers where you see all the cross bracing. Um, and that becomes part of the aesthetic, that's obviously not something that can can happen in 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 this building. It would have to be done in a way that uh, maintains the windows where they are in the exterior, where it is. And that's what makes that retrofit so expensive. So yes, you're going to be saving some money by not redoing the outside, but it's going to also make other things cost more because you're not going to be doing a seismic retrofit in the most efficient manner. You're going to be doing it in a manner that preserves some of the aesthetics of of the building. So it's, you know, it it's it's going to save you some money in some aspects, but it's also going to drive some of the other costs. So it's, you know, without, without looking at it in detail, it's kind of hard to say which which way that would push or or pull it. And then the other question was the timing, if we went out to the development uh, community. Um, I mean, it would probably take uh, some time to put a document together that listed, you know, what we were looking for, if we wanted to put any restrictions or if we just wanted to have it um, wide open. But it's probably something that if we wanted to put out there, I would imagine by the first of the year, maybe we'd be able to get something out there. And then uh, probably uh, realistically, um, again, it depends on if you wanted to do uh, the RFQ, RFP. I don't think, um, again, as we mentioned at the last meeting, um, you got to be careful putting some of these things out without having expectations or or funds to follow them through. It's going to um, drive somewhat the quality of the response that you get. So I think you'd probably do it as an RFQ, so you just get some uh, preliminary feedback um, to start that conversation. So it's probably another two to three months after that. So probably six months till you had some direction out of that process. Probably a couple of months to get something together and then two or three months to get information back and we through it.
Can I make a comment? To be, to be quite honest, I don't think there is a way to do it without damaging the exterior of the building. The the type of elements you're going to be inserting require such heavy equipment and a um, lifting that you would not be able to slide them kind of inside like needles into fabric. You'd have to demolish uh, significant portions of the exterior building and then push them in to the appropriate place, uh, rebuilding around them. So I I I think, I don't, really don't think it's feasible to do a uh, a stealth uh, structural rehab.
Yeah, and I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, I think um, what you said, Julian, also just runs into the requirement to make a decision by December or February. I mean, it seems like we we don't even have the time to get the information.
But I think understanding it in an order of magnitude is appropriate and. But I think understanding it in an order of magnitude is appropriate and enough for us to make a decision.
If I could, I did want to chime in just because uh, I've made Julian walk me through this conversation many times about trying to rehabilitate the building and what you just heard about seismically improving the building and how in order to maintain the historical building, you have to modify the way you would do the seismic improvement. That's pretty much Julian's answer to every question I ask him about HVAC and, and the, the computer systems and the wiring. It, it, it can be done and we can modernize the building, but we will have to make choices to preserve the historical character of the building that may not optimize all of that equipment for our purposes. And that's okay, but, but we want to go into it telling you that's, that's the kind of decision that we're making.
So, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, please, Scott.
Uh, so, and I'm, I'm sorry if I'm, I'm hyper focusing on the, the finances, but if we build a new building, you know, we pay their, or five to eight million to do that. And then we say, we're going to hold on to this building and we're going to lease it out to someone like Central Marine Fire. And it's unsafe for Central Marine Fire, so we're going to have to update this building. Or, or because the lifespan is over for these things that we're talking about and it's not, you know, earthquake, you know, safe. Now we're talking about spending, you know, five to eight on the new building and then I mean, even if we split it with Corredamadera, but you know, a minimum of four million to up, update this building to make it, you know, safe for, for some other use. First of all, am I getting that right? That we're going to have to put that type of money in in order to lease this to somebody else? And if I am getting that right, where are we getting that money from?
You're getting it right that some level of improvements have to occur no matter who's in this building. Fire is an interesting question because some of the rules that we're constrained by change because the public doesn't get free access to a fire uh, house. So, and, and a fire building. So how this would all be done might have some capturing of, of savings because of the nature of the food be occupying.
Do we have any idea of the numbers that we're talking about?
I don't. It's still, we're still talking a huge number to rehabilitate the building and buildings because that building is going to need something too. It's, it faces almost every challenge this building does. It's just the needs are different for the firefighters than they maybe are for meeting the public in a, in a meeting room, for example.
Have we earmarked where that money is going to come from?
We haven't. Uh, and that's part of what the fire authority and the two councils need to start talking about collaboratively is what's the long-term vision for these buildings and the, how are we going to pay for all of this? And we don't yet have a, a plan. I'll be honest, we're trying to figure that out. Both the city and the town have uh, firms that assist us with doing long-range planning of different types of financial mechanisms. So we've started to ask them to map out for the fire authority, what some of the options would be. And a big question for both councils will be, does Larkspur take care of Larkspur's two buildings and Corredamadera takes care of Corredamadera's two buildings? Or do we look at the Central Marine Police model and do it as partnership with a, a single vote of the community to have a, a, a district that kind of sits on top of everybody uh, for that purpose, just to maintain the buildings. Uh, and I, those are all the questions I have start getting vetted and timing. It's unfortunate. All these things are kind of in this odd sequence of timing.
And I think you have to add to that, whether there's um, general um, conversation about more collaboration or consolidation within the Ross Valley too.
So let me, let me put a question I can to the, to the council. I, what I'm feeling is that we are kind of all in favor of building a new building um, for the offices, holding on to this building, leasing it out to someone like, you know, Marine Fire, something like that. And my question, I guess, is, are we being fiscally responsible by dropping five to eight million on the new building and then dropping another several building, several million on this building? Is that, is that the right thing to do at this point with our limited resources?
I, just if I may, um, go ahead. If we were to look at those options and we were to include values and costs and think of it as a, an asset management, asset enhancement question, a real estate economics question, I think you would get the right answer. And I think you would get the answer that uh, you just identified as our consensus because we own the properties.
So, so, so let me ask maybe to the staff, is it realistic to think we put the money in, we upgrade this building and then we can get some type of financing from a bank because the building is now twice as expensive because it's been upgraded and it's a, it's a phenomenal building. And now if we have liquidity issues, we would have someplace to tap into if we needed to.
Possibly, although the more typical way that government operates is that the value of the building is used to leverage in, in debt financing, which you've done for some of the things that we've had to deal with, like the roads. So improving this building and enhancing its value may present opportunities to leverage when, when and if the city needs to get debt finance, whether that's a, a bank or a bond or uh, there's several other, I could, I could probably take us on a detour for about an hour, but that's might not be fruitful.
Per the mayor, do you, would you like a, a motion or do you want to?
I would like to ask staff.
You have at least one member of the public that wanted to.
Yeah, and I'd like to hear public.
And I'd actually, I'll also like to have an opportunity to say one, one thing.
So let's get, let's go to the. We'll go to a council member here off if you have any concise comments before public comment.
Yes, we don't have consensus. And those who have suggested that we do are not accurate.
Well, I think we haven't called the question to see if.
It's not a question of calling the question. I don't, I don't believe we have consensus.
Consensus doesn't mean one hundred percent.
Okay, but, but hang on, let me just ask if I may, Kevin, uh, I, I don't. Uh, I, I've heard a lot of people's thoughts on this. I, I don't understand yours. So can you share what you think we should do?
No, please. I think we, we want to hear them now.
Okay, I think I've kind of uh, led up to it. Um, I think maintaining this building as City Hall is intrinsically important for our community. And I don't believe that others in the community will disagree with that. There may be some who might, um, and I'm not sure who is, whose opinions are being reflected in this conversation this evening. But I don't think that's in the interest of this community. I think it's in the interest, in, in the interest of this community to preserve this building as City Hall, to be using it as City Hall, to continue to use it for our purposes as city council and for other entities that are, have used it historically. We can do a lot of things uh, working with other agencies to make economic sense out of that model. I'm all for that. But I am absolutely not in favor of moving those fundamental city functions out of this building. Does that help?
So, so can I just?
Sorry, that was a question to the mayor. Does that help?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can I, can I follow up with a question? And again, this is just clarification, Kevin. So you're, you're proposing, you know, the estimates that we've heard is, I, I don't even remember who is twelve million or twelve to eighteen million, something like that. So, so you're proposing that instead of building a second building on the Commons, that we spend the twelve to eighteen million necessary to retrofit this building and keep uh, chamber council here, keep the city offices here, uh, and only had one building on the Commons. Is that what you're saying?
That would be my preference.
Okay.
Um, I don't have an objection to finding other opportunities as we already have for performing cer- certain city services outside of this building. That's fine. We can figure out a way to do that. I'm all in favor of it. The bottom line is, this building is an historic resource. It needs to be preserved as a city asset. It needs to be preserved as city council. Um, we can do whatever we need to do to maintain other office functions in the building if we have to. But the bottom line is, the answer to your question is yes.
Okay. And through the mayor, okay. Just a follow-up to staff. So hypothetically, we jump on the Gavin bandwagon. We said, okay, we agree, we want to have uh, council chambers here. What I have heard is, you know, that's, you know, a twelve to eighteen million dollar project because we can't have council chambers here unless the building is safe. My question is, I, I have seen earmarked maybe five million dollars that you said we have available. Hypothetically, we need, you know, fifteen million. Uh, where do we get the other ten from?
Likely some form of debt finance.
Okay. And can you extrapolate that on that a little bit, how that would look?
Well, whether it's some sort of bond or it's a certificate of participation or one of the other types of notes, it's, it's without going into the details of different types of debt financing and their advantages and disadvantages, it, it's not unlike any borrowing, right? We have prevailing rate that we would get out in the lending market and we'd borrow that over twenty or thirty years to, to pay it back. Depending on the particular structure of the, the financing is whether or not we're leveraging assets that we own already that have borrowing capacity against them or whether or not we're leveraging revenue streams. And when you leverage revenue streams, typically you're out asking the voters to, to support.
I'm going to remind uh, the council, I suggested a feasibility test earlier and I think that test would apply uh, under any circumstance. I think we should have Kitchell perform the test. I think they should use real estate appraisals if necessary. I think it should be objective and scientific.
And, and I'm sorry, just, just.
That will also be the fastest way to enhance.
And I agree with that entirely.
Okay. And, and I, I just have one, one follow-up question. And again, I don't know if you know this, or we need an appraisal for it. If we retrofit this for a public building such as council chambers as opposed to retro, retrofitting it for a non-publicly accessible building like uh, Marine Fire, is the value of the building greater if we do the higher level of upgrade? Or do you think that it really wouldn't apply at the end of the day of what the, the value of the building would be?
I'm going to comment after.
You can answer that. You, you, I, I, again, this isn't my area of expertise. So, you know, anybody who knows.
Public buildings, public buildings are challenging because um, it's appraised. So there's two ways you sort of appraise them, right? You can say, you can commission appraisal saying you're allowed to change the use and that creates all sorts of conversations. Or you can have them appraise saying that public use is, is what it is. When we appraise property, almost all our properties have been appraised. Um, that appraisal is usually tied to the value to replacing kind because that's the only logical way the appraiser can kind of work it out. Um, so I'd have to actually pull a record. I can't remember what the last appraised value for City Hall was. It's, it's, it's surprisingly low. It's, it's, it's well under ten million dollars. Because this isn't a huge piece of land. If it's still a public building, it is what it is. And even if you upgrade it, all the next appraisal we would commission would do would ask, what does it cost to replace what you've got at the time I did the appraisal? And so that's more akin to the appraised value that all property owners have on anything that they own um, for insurance purposes than it is the type of appraisal where you're trying to figure out if, you know, if you have marketable value.
So I, I'm understanding that to me hypothetically, if it's a ten million dollar building and we drop eighteen million into upgr- upgrading it, it's still going to praise it about ten million dollars.
Potentially, uh, it, it, it might be.
Eleven million.
It might be a little more. I mean, we, we get this building appraised for insurance purposes, I think on a five-year cycle. I'd have to double check. Maybe a three-year cycle, but regardless, we're probably in a little bit of a lag. We may be now around ten million now just because the numbers that Mr. Skinner has already shown you are creeping up there. So.
But if, if it, if it costs more to improve it to a public access than it does to an administrative office, you subtract that from the value just cited and the residual value higher, lower? That's the feasibility test.
But you're there, but we're, it's more than seismically upgrading. We have four parking places. We have real access problems for the majority of our community who attends meetings here or who needs to come to office spaces to do the business of a city. And I think we owe it to our community that we're going to put a brand new state-of-the-art library in there that people are going to access, that's going to have parking and it's going to have wheelchair accessibility, that we take this asset and keep it. But we envision a better civic space there for the rest of our community. This, I mean, my father couldn't come to this building when he was in a motorized wheelchair because there's no access. And is that is, is that how we want to treat the civic responsibility that we have?
I think the access is separate.
That will have to be dealt with no matter what we do with this building.
But for eighteen million dollars for five million or maybe eight, we can, we can incorporate the common structure library and a contemporary office space slash community business room for our, for our city. I don't know why we're afraid of that.
Julian, I have a clarifying question regarding cost. Did the top range identified for improvements to this building include all the ADA improvements required for making, having public assembly in these same rooms?
Y- yeah, the, the range of costs that we gave for this building, the twelve to eighteen, all of the improvement scenarios for this building in that range would include the full complement of ADA. It's just the different levels of finishing, the different functions, how many room spaces are there? Um, that sort of thing. Um, but yeah, we would not spend twelve million and not bring the building up to completely up to, to ADA.
And, and what are typical escalation uh, figures over, say, a year?
Uh, those change very dramatically and we saw them.
This year.
The Kitchell, the last escalation estimate we got from Kitchell was looking at construction starting two years out and it had a sixteen percent escalation on it.
Okay. Good. And, and that clock is ticking too.
How do we define consensus, Mr. Mayor?
The feasibility test.
So if I comment on the mayor's statement, I, I think we could go back to put our heads together, talk to Kitchell and some of our other advisors and see how quickly we could do a feasibility analysis. I, I understand what the mayor's asking for. And if we can do that quickly, we'll commission it and get it back to you so that you can have it as part of this decision. If we can't, and it's an underlying need that you have to make this decision, then we have to start talking about the the possibility that you're not going to make this decision in time to deal with the library, which is fine. What you have to understand is you're losing whatever savings are captured by commissioning the project.
I, I think order of magnitude analysis is okay because I think that's where this is going to go.
And then maybe something we can turn back around for your next meeting or, or at least the second meeting in November.
Yeah, I, I think cartoon versions of this are going to be enough. Because we own the land and you have to put that in the value calculation.
True.
For the benefit of someone who has never done construction projects, could you describe what that type of analysis is?
Value minus cost equal residual value. The higher residual value is the most feasible.
And you are asking to have that done on this building alone or?
I think he's asking for it to be done on all the options that we
Okay.
presented or heard today.
We own both lands.
And I want, I, I also don't want to discount that I, I, I hear Councilmember Candell and that, that's a discussion that we'll wrestle with, which is if we did move, we're, we're still going to do something with this building. So we have costs regardless.
Can I ask, is there any scenario where someone other than us pays those costs?
If you just answered your question, at what cost?
I would say depending on who was occupying this building, there they could ultimately be the one paying for it. So it depends on who us is, right? Because if this is a public building, in some way, public resources have to repair, have to improve this building. Whether it's, you know, whether it's us, whether some district I haven't imagined says we need a headquarters and we would. Whether it's, you know, whether it's us, whether some district I haven't imagined says we need a headquarters and we would love to rehabilitate this building. Or if it was uh some joint powers authority, well, whoever it is, whoever's occupying the building is probably on the hook, and that would mean. Wherever their money comes from, which is in the end of day, all of us is gonna be responsible for it.
At one time, this was a ballroom and they had dances up here.
And a movie theater, uh, and it's in the community auditorium. It's been a lot of things.
A lot of things.
Yeah. Uh, still, I think, have at least one hand on the.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
I think it's in the audience.
Oh, well, let's open it to public comment, please.
Yeah, I'll wait till the public speaks, thanks.
Oh, well, we would love to hear your question.
Yeah, I've I've been listening, you know, with great interest and sort of see the, you know, different sides forming here. Just just to um make sure I've got the numbers, the low, we haven't talked at all about leasing. So the low end there is something like two hundred a year. And, you know, building space, the low end is like five million and the low end for trying to move back into four hundred magnolias, about twelve million. I just wanted to make sure numbers are about right.
Those are the base rental costs, but we would have to evaluate the buildings and make. Sufficient tenant improvements for them to serve as a city administrative office. So that's a unknown till we selected a location and evaluated it. So it's it's some unknown amount. My, my impression without having done deep analysis is there's a nice sliding scale of. Uh, inverse to the rent, the higher the rent, probably the more turnkey the property is for our purposes, and the lower the rent. Probably the more investment on our part to to make it a a suitable city administrative office.
Okay, and just um one one more um point and then a question. So I. You know, uh, along what Councilmember Way was saying, I I think a new facility would offer not only parking. And, you know, a flexibility to not to work with an historical building. But the synergy of being next to a library and, you know, and the extra money we're talking about going from five to twelve, we could really. Do something that might address fire safety. I mean, there's more here than what we're discussing if we're talking about the city building. Um, the the other question I had was, um, you know, with or to the, uh. You know, um, the monies that you mentioned, Dan, are are those really like the the, you know. Road and the Bon Air Bridge. I I I wasn't quite clear where else they could be spent. I mean, what other unfundabilities could we use them for?
Yeah, so we covered some of that the last meeting. So, for example, um, we anticipate there'll be unspent lease revenue bond money. That uh that we borrowed to do the road rehabilitation program. But those are actually public facility lease revenue bonds and Bond Council tells us they can be spent on a variety of. Public facility needs, and this would count qualify. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, I'm gonna be a big cheerleader that we spend that money somehow because. We're not gonna see those interest rates again anytime soon. It's a, it's a wonderful opportunity for us to. To take advantage of the fact that Julian and his team brought the road program in under budget, so. Whether you spend it there or you spend on some other public facility or or infrastructure is a discussion that would need to occur. The Measure B Fund has built up a sizable reserve because the internet. Sales in particular were stronger than anticipated um during the pandemic, and as a result. Uh, Measure B, which collects against internet sales, has done fairly well, so. That's a council restricted pot of money, but it's reached a level where we owe it to the taxpayers to do something with it. And so we need to figure out what that is if it's not this opportunity. Uh, Measure C is very similar. As I said at the last meeting, um. The strange archaic way the state collects sales tax, we were still getting Measure C checks. Four years after it expired. I mean, it's just kind of the nature of the way their system works. So. Because we'd kind of shut that program down, it's just been adding to a reserve that was still there. Um, and your commu- your citizens oversight committee flagged that reserve and said you should invest it in. In the fire, one of the two firehouses, if not both of them. Um, but that's not a policy decision that the council has ever actually taken up. You just decided to park it for now. Um, so that's a question that would be out there. Um, and then, um. The T O T Fund is one that the council created by policy to in to do investments that you see having a return to the business community. And so. One of the uh things that I think in particular Councilmember Candela has said many times is having some more parking close to downtown is an investment in the business community too. So. I take that as that's on on the table as a use, but if we didn't use it for that purpose. Since you've earmarked it for some investment that has a return to the business community. That's another fund that's built up a bit now, and we need to figure out what that return should be. So that's that's what those different uses are on a very uh global level. We'd have to, you know, sit down for a while to get into the minutia.
So just real quickly, I'm sorry, just one last thing. On those first two pots of money, could they? Both for the library and or for storm drains?
Um, sorry, which two are we talking about?
The bridge and the and the roads.
Oh, I think you mean the lease revenue bonds and Measure B, maybe. I'm not sure which.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, so I impose the storm drains to the um. Bond Council, so I'd have to go back and ask, but in my instinct is probably yes. And then the Measure B, um, yes, you could spend that on storm drains.
Thank Catherine.
Yeah, just one last thing that hasn't been brought up that I think we need to add to our calculation is that as a council, we serve. Um, we serve the public and we serve at the best, uh, make the best policy decisions for the public. But we also have a city staff that has been living and work, has been working in a constrained space here. Um, and it's getting harder and harder to recruit to local governance, um, for people to be employed in local governance. And I think we need to recognize that we need to remain competitive with um other entities in which employees of quality would choose to work. And I would like us to uh to realize that we have a duty of obligation to them too, to create a space. That is um safe and collaborative and also allows them to work at their highest capacity in service to the public.
I'd I'd like to make a point of clarification on a comment made by the vice mayor and the question he posed. Uh, Dan, could you clarify, please, if if the monies that were remaining from the previous. Uh, project be used towards stor- storm drain uh repair? It would only provide a fraction necessary for the project, which has been in our uh discussed as part of our capital improvement plan for the last ten years.
That's correct. Essentially, right now, the way the city's dealing with the storm drains is. Whenever we identify a pot of money that we could throw at the storm drains, we do. And it's not making a consistent, sustainable, measurable impact on the overall need. It. I'm not saying it doesn't help. It helps a lot. Um, and in fact, the council's already made a decision to spend the federal money that came in. To to accelerate some of the investment in the storm drain system.
And in no way would um. Lessen the need for what is proposed in Measure G.
Well, it would, it would lessen it by about ten percent, maybe, maybe.
I just want to make that clear.
Maybe, maybe five percent.
To clarify any confusion that it may be in apples.
That's a hard question to answer because uh by tomorrow. Some agency is gonna probably have passed another regulation changing how we have to fix the storm drains, so the cost will be different tomorrow than it is today, so.
Moving goalposts. Thank you, and thank you, Vice Mayor Paulson, for letting me clarify that. Mr. Mayor, real quick, Councilmember Harof.
Before we go, uh, first of all, I just wanted to say, um, uh, reflecting on the comments that. My colleague, uh, Councilmember Way just made about providing um appropriate working space for. Uh, the folks that uh serve the public and in this community. No one will disagree with that. That's not the question that before us tonight. The question is how best to do that. Um, and I don't think there is uh any necessarily a specific. Um, result to that conversation. And I appreciate the mayor's suggestion um with our city council, uh, our city managers endorsement that we provide. A feasibility assessment to figure out what's the best uh route to get there. Secondly, on the T O T Fund, um, if there's money there, um, I would welcome the city's engagement in a conversation. With the Chamber of Commerce, because we um, we represent the business community, and I think that's what that money's for.
Thank you, Councilmember Harof. Let's open it up for public comment. Allison, who would like to speak first?
Thank you. I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience, and the first comment will come from Kevin.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, council. Um. Fascinating conversation and uh agree actually with uh both council members away and hair off on this one. Uh, but I think there's one question that hasn't been addressed, and if you do further feasibility study, it should be absolutely addressed. And that is realizing the current sites lasted for a hundred years. Who knows how long? The common site would be used. And the fact is, we are facing sea level rise. Uh, during this conversation, I went to one of the interactive maps to see what would happen to the common site as it is now. We already have flooding on Creekside Drive about a hundred yards north of the common site. Uh, there is flooding all along Doherty, uh, especially down near the southern end of Redwood High School. And so what if we build city offices that at some point down the road, nobody can reach? Um, shouldn't the feasibility include the cost of raising the road at least? From the common site to Magnolia Drive? The one advantage the current location has is. That it is high enough to probably survive. Both sea level rise and if there was a tsunami, which I sent you a map of. And how that would block a lot of roads around that site if one were to occur. As much as city staff might want to hunker down on an island, uh, there is that issue of how are they going to do their jobs? In the event of either one of those emergencies, and shouldn't that be factored into this decision making? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Allison, who's next?
Our next comment will come from caller one four zero two.
Good afternoon.
Uh, James Holmes, Larchburg, very interesting discussion, um, several points. Uh, number one, I think perhaps the most interesting and significant point uh that has come out here. Is you cannot have one building there on the site, and therefore you don't have a lot of the uh economies of scale, the site being the commons. You can't have a lot of the economies in scale and joint use that have been talked about uh for a long time. Uh, there's real grant issues there. Uh, there there also may be issues regarding the purposes of the donation. Uh, of the uh space from the subdivision. I don't know if that was too intended to include city uh facilities. In any of them, uh, number two, you have a real time crunch because one of your best uh alternative options is uh. I mean, is uh the uh fire uh facility as fire facility in the city hall, but uh. They won't even start to get a report um until November, uh, and uh. Uh, you have indicated you would like to have a decision by December on the city hall direction. So that's a time crunch. And the additional time crunch is you apparently don't have anywhere near the time you need to get uh bids uh from the from developers, expressions of interest. Uh, number three, uh, it seems that uh you're going to have to pay a significant amount. Uh, toward the city hall regardless of whether or not it's going to be used at as as a city hall or another uh public uh agency. So it looks like you're in the vicinity of the high uh uh the 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 cost of rehabbing city hall, no matter what you do. Uh, uh, number four, or uh num- none of the city documents that are supposed to guide the city council decision making. Envision in new city hall, all of them, I to my knowledge, I could be wrong, but to my knowledge, the general plan, the downtown specific plan, the twenty thirty plan. They all uh uh specify seismic strengthening and renovation of city hall. Uh, number four or five, I guess there are, you've already spent a lot of money on city hall to rehabilitate it initially. Uh, number six, uh, the um, the report does differentiate between the structure itself and the components. So it's not like the whole ball of wax is is defective. Uh, and uh, number uh, uh, four, five, six, I guess. Uh, this is an essential element of the downtown's character. It's a symbol of Larchburg history. It's an important element in our um, in our historic uh, our our national register status. And as Dick Cunningham's research indicated, it's a symbol of the power of Larchburg's women. Uh, because they are the one after they got the vote to push the bonds through to build it. And finally, uh, as a practical matter, uh, if you, if the central Marin Fire approach were to fall through. Uh, and you move the city hall and you move the city administrative functions. Uh, you will most likely be left with a white elephant vacant, steadily deteriorating, and a source of debate. And controversy for the next decade, especially if there is a recession as we seem to be moving into. So that uh the more the discussion continues, the more sense it seems to make to proceed with rehabilitating city hall. For the administrative office. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. And I wish everybody a happy Halloween. Next comment.
Next comment will come from Mary Denton.
Hello, this is Mary Denton. I I kind of stumbled into this very interesting conversation. I tuned into the meeting to hear uh any discussion on Measure G and and. And then found myself engaged in this. Um, I, it seems to me, based on the the discussion that has gone around, and I have very. A a range of feelings about this. I agree with Councilmember Harof that I think this is a really historic building and a key part of Larchburg's character. But also with Councilmember Way about the need for modern accessible um space for both staff and the community. But I think from a financial standpoint, it seems to me that if the decision is. I think it's a binary decision that if the building is retained by the city, whether it's for council offices or other city purposes. Or um if it's leased to another uh department. Um, one way or another, the city is going to have to pay for all of those renovations. Um, and if it's leased, let's say, on an as-is basis, then the rent that the city would get for it will be. Uh, commensurately lower than it would be if it were renting a building that was. Modern and accessible and and earthquake proof. Um, and so it seems like the alternatives are sell the building and take whatever uh the city can get from selling it. And I completely understand all the issues around the historical nature of the building, et cetera, et cetera. Or keep the building and whether it's used for the city or whether it's leased, it seems like the city is going to have to own up to the full cost of or close to the full cost. Of renovating it to current standards, whether it's used for the city, the fire department, or if it's leased to somebody else. So it just seems like that cost has got to be factored into the the finances in one way or another. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Who's the next public comment coming from?
I'm looking for any additional raised hands from our audience members. A vocal in Zoom Manning Chambers. There's no further public comment.
All right. Thank you very much. That was a very vigorous conversation. We're gonna close public comment now and bring it back to the city council for any further discussion. Uh, I guess, Dan, would you like to uh focus us on direction?
Well, at this point, Mr. Mayor, I think the staff has some homework to do. Come back to you with some information that you asked for so you can start to prioritize these different opportunities and and decide what's the best course. We're on a pretty tight timeline from the perspective of trying to uh capture economies of scale if we want. To combine these two projects in one construction process. But um if that ultimately isn't something that we can accomplish, then we'll just continue this conversation till we can resolve it, so.
And by my reference to a feasibility. And by my reference to a feasibility test earlier, I did not mean full blown construction cost estimates versus anything that would lengthen the timeframes you had identified earlier. I was thinking of pro forma level framing of ranges.
Whenever the public, when this takes us back to the beginning of the meeting, you authorized us to engage Kitchell in a contract for the duration of the library project and or anything else we do on the property. They're the ones who already done the analysis of this building. So I'm quite confident that they're the right ones to help us get this started.
I'm looking for something though that fits within the timeframes described earlier and ranges of cost or except.
I understand.
And I'm sorry, one, one quick question. We're talking about economies of scale for doing the two projects together, two buildings together. Hypothetically, if we don't have a decision in time, we begin the project, we later decide we want to do the second building, what additional costs are we talking about? What, what would it be actually saving by doing them together as opposed to separately?
Two sets of conditions versus.
So there's overlapping issues with proceeding with the first building and then trying to come along with a second building later, depending on how the, how the phasing works out. There would be advantages to accelerating the second building and having some overlap with the first building because you would be able to save on some construction management costs while you had your team all assembled. But at the same time, doing that probably means some sort of a change order, negotiated contract with your contractor, which is not going to get you the best price on the actual construction. So on the other hand, it may be better to push that out and do a whole separate public process for that to make sure you got the best value for the building. But then that pushes that project out and then you're adding a whole new set of construction management of time to it because it's a separate project. So as soon as you miss that opportunity to do them at the same time, your costs are going to go up, whether it's your cost because you're doing it as a change order after the fact and not publicly vetting that true cost or because you're extending that project and rather than having your team manage the bigger project, they're managing a longer project.
I also think in case I want to, if they're two separate projects and you do one now and you do one three years from now, then in today's dollars, you've heard it's about a thousand to thirteen hundred dollars a square foot. That's where we're getting these different ranges that we keep have that right, right? Thousand to thirteen hundred. So I suspect if you decide we need a year to decide this secondary question or more, and then we decide to commission a project, you've gone toward that higher end of that number.
Can you convert that just so I understand it? Are we talking half a million dollars? Are we talking a million dollars? What, what, what are we?
You're probably talking at a you're talking ten, ten percent of your lucky, twenty likely, thirty possibly. I know that Julian's cringing because he always told me to always say thirty, but.
So for an eight million dollar project, we're now talking about two point four million. That's our penalty for delaying.
That five to eight probably goes up to seven to eleven or something like that. Yeah.
But that's when we say we're delaying a few years to sort this out.
No, I just want to understand the kind of what, what, what we're talking about here. Thank you.
All right. If there is no further public comment and there is no further council discussion, city manager, do we have any further business this afternoon?
No, this will come back on your meeting on the sixteenth of November for further discussion.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We're adjourned to the regular meeting of November the second. Thank you very much for everybody's attendance and interest. Good evening.